Call the committee of the whole meeting for the corporation of the town of Cobalt on December 5th to order at 6:31 PM. Disclosure of community interest in general nature thereof. Is there any? There's none. Three deputations, delegations. One, Rick Caldwell for the Classic Theater is here to speak with council tonight. Rick, would you like to come up?
Thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. I'm not going to do a presentation. You have the brief that I sent in and one Mr. Gallo put together. I'm certainly here to answer questions. I'm here to enlighten you on the operations of the theater and how we hope to proceed going forward. We all want to see this succeed in this town. And it's certainly been my goal in the 16 years I've worked with the Classic Theater to keep the theater in Cobalt.
Anybody have any questions? Was that your turn?
On the last season that you ran, how many ticket sales did you actually have? Are we gonna have Congress?
I guess we'll have Congress. It's on the agenda later, so we'll be doing a discussion about the theater later. So maybe if you want to.
I can give you a ballpark number. I don't have the exact number. We had, the last season we ran, we ran, I believe we ran eight shows. Three were sold out, so that's very close to 250. We had one other show that did very well, but we got stormed out. Probably had some of our tickets did not actually attend, so the theater didn't look full, but the tickets were sold. So overall last season, that season was kind of the last of our combination of what came out of COVID. Because we'd had a whole series of things planned, pre-sold, and COVID hit. And of course, everybody was shut down in March, and we lost all over the following season, which had already been a four. Normally in about the 18 months to a year, we're in general, to be quite. So what we had done, rather than either us, potentially, who I suppose, not really, we didn't insure all those shows. But what we did was we insured or insured each of those performers that their show would not be lost. We would get the employment when the government of Ontario allowed us to work again. And we kept that word with every single show. So they all got their work, they all got their contracts on it. Some of them had their contracts rewritten three times because we kept trying to bring them forward a year at a time. We all listed several hundred of them. So the response of our audience, both to the the shows that we were allowed to do with partial audiences, which we ran four local, we had four local shows. We had that from the Trindell Foundation that essentially paid local performers and subsidized tickets to fully. All people had to do was apply. And I believe we sold out all of those shows we actually wanted to run, but of course I sold them except for that. So with a seating capacity of 250, when I do the planning for the theater, I plan for 125. That gives us some room to move so that while sales are really good, we make up for when our sales aren't so good. In the main, I think you saw from the documents that I gave you, that we run very close to our break even though I some years will make a small, a few thousand dollars. Other years we lose a few thousand. Right now, we're sitting with 8,000 in the hole. And we're not coming to Cobalt to look for that money. Don't worry, we have that covered. But that's partly a function of kind of where we're all at right now between issues with the building because we were going to be shut down because of roof. So that instability causes some problems. So we have, right now, we actually have nothing worked. We have no contracts. Nobody's on the hook for anyone at the Classic. So what we are doing instead are these local shows that are running this weekend, the Christmas concert this weekend. Nico, Nico Sharp, did a show releasing an album. And Martin Greenwell, our chair, has a couple of, we have a couple of shows lined up, again, local. The Agricultural Society runs a show every February. We run those as fundraisers, as fundraisers for somebody else plus a little bit for the theater. That's kind of how that works.
Because last winter's fundraiser was canceled last minute. And the Pied Piper Kids Show tried to book their showing this year, and they weren't able to use the Classic Theater.
Yeah, the Pied Piper, that was an interesting situation because we've worked with Pied Piper for a long time. But Pied Piper now wanted to run shows in the middle of the day and our weekends. We didn't have staff, so we couldn't do that. I can't expect my board members to work full-time at the Classic Theater. And some of them do. So I don't work a lot of time. It's always been there for many years, as we all know. I've been there for a long time. I just didn't happen to be in the building all the time like they used to. So that was the issue with Pied Piper. They wanted to explore some different things, and so that is a rental we do not have right now. How well it's working back at the school, I don't know. If they ever want to come back to the theater, we want them happy to have them.
For evening, like.
For evening shows, we have a stop again now. We did not have a stop when the chair of Pied Piper was trying to make these arrangements. We had four board members. We were that close to saying, we just can't do this anymore. Now, our board is doubled to eight. We hope to get four more to spread the word, though. Now, we have a very good staff person down there. All of you are familiar. So she has started her time for us. And that will make a big difference because now we can do things like, for example, when we didn't have a staff, this Christmas show that's coming up this weekend, we couldn't have had a rehearsal starting at 5:30 on a Wednesday night. Because we had nobody down there at the theater. But now we do. And so that's, it really does roll on itself as we start having success and we start having shows. There's more available, we can hire staff, we can have a core now. And we have more access to the community. The community has more access to us because we've got people who can be there. So we are just really kicking up again, but again, because of the current situation we're just living on. I have a book here of six shows for next year, all sitting, waiting to be signed, sending me emails on a regular basis. And I can't sign anything during the road.
Is it fair to say that without the building, the theater doesn't exist?
Well, the Classic Theater doesn't exist. That was the situation when that theater was rebuilt. It was probably this close to the wrecking ball. We well know that. I knew we were that close to having the building locked down. Larry Aquino and that group put the proposal to the town and say, let's revive this building. It's been empty since the last movie show.
And so that revival and rebuilding of the building, was that paid entirely by taxpayers?
A lot of it was grant money, a lot of it was stuff that Larry Aquino got. A lot of the, a lot of the, almost everything that's inside that building now belongs to the Classic Theater and co. All stability got via the tax. And a lot of, a lot of paperwork and I'm working with various government majors, it's federal, provincial. And we get a lot of provincial grants. Again, once we get shows going again, we have contracts signed. There are grants we can apply for, which we've done in the past, which Kendra will do probably now. I believe the theater can be essentially self-funded. We haven't had the grant from Cobalt. We haven't had a grant from the Pacific shores that we think since 2000. I think we had, we had a grant for three years from them and already had. And we grant from Cobalt, as you have the history of many years up until the last few years. And we haven't had to come to you for a moment. We haven't been able to meet our operating costs and now have enough money that we can afford a staff person. The more employment we can put in this town, the better. And we have plans for some students potentially going forward. Because there's, the government has grant programs. You can apply for them. Whether it happen or not, we're not going to count.
Okay. Counselor Wilcox.
I'm just wondering, years ago, my son, through TDSS, ended up being a volunteer for theater through the community involvement program. Is that still a thing with the school system?
It's still available. We haven't had a lot of students active in the last few years. Well, COVID, of course, has messed everybody up. So what we were doing in 2016, 17 doesn't really apply to where we are right now because we're still rebuilding. Everybody's rebuilding their volunteer base. As I said, you know, we've got four board members to the table tonight. I want to go over there after this meeting. So it's a slow thing. Rebuilding audiences is also a slow thing. I didn't put a lot of notes in there, but you know, some of the theaters that I mentioned, I talked to their managers. And some of their audiences are building slowly. And I think we've done pretty well considering we had Leahy here. This child's here basically sold out. And behind the music, the theater show, which is going to Kirkland Lake this year in February. That was the one that got snowed out. And they actually asked if they could come back and try again and hopefully not get a snow date and run the show again. But we had other things on that weekend. So that's actually the agriculture shows. I can't push them aside for a professional show. This is still community based theater. So yes, to answer your question in terms of students, I would love to have student volunteers back again. I'd love to have student techs back again. As the drama clubs reactivate again in the schools, we really need to get those students back inside that building. I'd love to see the Sears Festival reinvigorated again. That used to put students in all the time, and they used to bring their bags. There's a really good play being rerun tonight on the event.
As I was saying earlier, the discussion for council with the Classic Theater is on the agenda later in our meeting. So, but thank you for this information, and we also have a staff report in our package. And if we have any questions that come out of our discussion, are you going to stay around or?
I'd go over to the board meeting at the theater. I can certainly come back.
Or we can have Steve send the questions to you.
I'm only 100 meters out of the road. If you have questions, send somebody or have Steve send you a note, and I can come back. We haven't talked at all about leases. We haven't talked about those other theater arrangements that are happening in other places. If you want information about those things, if that will help your discussion. Happy to do so. But you do have, you know, you have the notes about what the situation in North Bay being similar to what what your previous town manager had proposed.
Well, council gets the information the week before the meeting. So I'm hoping all of our counselors had time to read their information that was in their agenda. So, and I know it was quite a lot of information.
Yeah, I try to keep it the two pages. I know it was slightly different with the three page. You hit the page one, two, and the other twelve.
Yeah, and like I said, the discussion comes later on our agenda for the theater, so.
Would you like me to return at some point? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think.
Good time, tell me when you want me back.
Text maybe or email or something?
I don't know. Steve can send me a text. Dale can send me a text. Give the information.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be long before we're there.
Yeah, it definitely won't take too long to get to.
Or would you prefer I just send it back?
If you could, yeah.
I will send the theater a note that I haven't abandoned.
Your board meeting at the theater might be more important.
I can't promise any decisions are going to be arrived at tonight. It's a discussion, so, but it might help the discussion to have you on here. Adoption of meeting agenda, draft motion, be it resolved, that council suspend the procedural bylaw to allow a motion to be introduced under section nine new business that it is time sensitive. Need a mover and a seconder.
Counselor Wilcox, welcome. You had something to say.
Yes, but no, you kind of jumped into that. I was going to suggest that we move this discussion on the Classic Theater to follow immediately rather than putting it off.
Counselor, if you want to discuss it, the staff reports.
Okay, yeah. Okay, can we do the? I've got the, the motion to suspend the procedural bylaw already on the agenda under section nine new business because that's time sensitive, so we'll address this one first. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Anderson. All in favor, or sorry, any discussion on suspending? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Okay, and I guess a draft motion to suspend procedural bylaw again to move the discussion on the Classic Theater leases?
6.3 leases, Classic Theater.
6.3 leases, Classic Theater.
We wanted to put it as maybe just.
4.1? 4.1? Okay, so I need a mover and a seconder on that motion as well. Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Anderson. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Carried? Okay, draft motion, be it resolved, that council approved the agenda of the committee of the whole dated December 5th, 2023 as presented. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Starchuk. Counselor Hughes, all in favor? Carrie? Okay, five point, or sorry, 4.1. Leases discussion, Classic Theater. There's a staff report included in your package. And you have the notes that Rick Caldwell has also submitted to council. I'd like to start off the discussion by saying we have asked the staff to communicate with all of the inhabitants of the municipally owned buildings to get the facts of who's paying what and the costs that are being incurred so that we can look at things on an unbiased, in an unbiased manner, and treat everybody the same with the exception that profit and/or corporations be treated differently than the not-for-profit organizations that are in the municipal properties. And I don't think we've given them the time to do that with the other numerous staff reports we've been requesting on a regular basis. So I don't know honestly how far we're going to get to make an informed decision at this point, but I think we can definitely begin the discussion. I would like to add direct staff to develop a policy of basically a blank blanket form of what questions to ask different, the different groups to give council all of the information they need to make proper decisions, not just now, but going forward so that we're treating everything the same. So that's my thoughts, and I can move it around the table and we can start the discussion however council wishes here. All within reason. And who would like to start it off? Counselor Cooper?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that for sure. If we get all the information we need upfront, then there's a lot less questions in the end to partner somebody into. I think as long as all these tenants are looking after the cost of their buildings, I would be happy with sticking with that type of lease.
Yeah, I certainly think, you know, we do need the formal leases and the amounts, I guess, you know, we've had some discussions about depends on, we don't want to have something closed because it may be a lot to buy, that kind of thing. But I definitely think we need a formal lease to go ahead and, you know, you provided us with a lot of information there, which is really handy.
Do you want to come forward, Rick, and sit? But we're going to finish going around our counselors first, and then we can get to addressing any questions. Counselor Starchuk?
Yeah, I was just going to say, by the sounds of things, I don't think you're looking, you don't want to rent like a increase of your rent monthly or yearly, like you pay a dollar, a year pays a dollar.
Ideally, yes. And that was, that was what was presented by the previous town manager was that we want to get all the buildings on the same lease.
I get the feeling that you're kind of worried that we would get increases. Is this something?
Well, we see a significant increase that says we can't viable operate here. That's not good.
That's what I mean.
You know, that's a, that's not good for the town. It's not good for us.
And that's what Counselor Anderson says. We don't want to lose these places either, but if we raise the rent and then they can't operate, we won't even, we'll lose it completely. You know what I mean? I understand where you're coming from, for sure.
And that was, that was what the previous town manager said. And I understand, we want to get everybody on the standard lease. And unfortunately, the timing of the beams in our building breaking down and basically shutting us down. Unfortunately, it didn't really cost us a whole lot. It was late in season, you figured what was really happening. But we haven't got to go forward either, so.
What would you like to see happen? Any, any from you?
In terms of the lease? I'm happy that with the lease, as it would be set up, I think we can be self-sustaining as saying, we can maintain your building. We can look after the hydro, we can look after the, we can look after the utilities. We can look after the internet problems. If I could hire more people in town, that's not a bad thing. So I think if we can operate and it's viable, like very viable, but just a little bit of stuff.
And this is all information that we were asking staff to gather from these entities, like the Classic Theater, so that everybody has all of the information so that we're making a proper and conscientious decision.
Yeah, I said, you, you have a different agenda than I have. Obviously, you've got town responsibilities and fiscal responsibilities of the town, your taxpayers, responsibilities of the board and patrons. It's slightly different, and we just got to make them come together. To see a situation that could potentially actually backfire for the town, it's not what anybody wants. Right now, we know we have multiple insurance, for example, we have multiple insurance policies. And I mentioned to Mr. Galley that we really need to sit down with all of our policies and your policies and make sure we are double or triple insured for fire. Or anything like that. And figure out whether we can make some savings for the town, some savings for the theater, hopefully some savings for both, a little bit of hardship for the insurance industry.
And that's part of what the, this policy that I'm asking staff to develop and will encompass is these questions so that it's all on a form that's standard so that all the information is in front and all, everybody's aware, both. Both sides are aware of what's happening and where it's caught and where there are any potential cost savings for both. Because I don't think we've ever done a full review. We've done this piecemeal in the past, so I'd like us to do it, come up with a policy first. Let's not put the cart before the horse. I would recommend that we leave status quo for the next year with the Classic Theater until we can develop something.
Let's continue with the discussion.
Yeah, but we can keep going around. Counselor Hughes?
Did we get the roof fixed?
It's closed.
Do we have a price on that?
It'll be all covered with the insurance.
It's deductible. We'll be working with the theater with the timeline to have contractors come in to repair the roof. It will be an extensive job up there just because of the house it was built originally. But we will be working with the timelines of the theater, so it will impact them as well. So that's something that we're looking towards this, towards the spring, summer time. Also, we will be continuing to get the roof shoveled if any accumulation of heavy snow. So there will be no threat.
Yeah, I believe we've been told that it's now stabilized. We have, the lures in and out of the gallery will eventually be removed. We're not in danger of being closed.
So insurance cover that? What's, is a deductible of $10,000 enough to cover that as well, or?
With the municipal insurance, yes, everything will be covered under that insurance.
What's the deductible?
Counselor?
So I'll start off with saying something nice, which is that I have been a subscriber, like for my whole family, even my youngest who fall asleep during the shows in the past. I bought a significant number of those Fitzgerald tickets last year. So I would love for the theater to continue as it is and for taxpayers even to pay for everything for you so I can go to the theater whenever I want. That aside. And not just for this theater, but I'm looking at the other tenants. And I think it's really important for us to say, okay, there's profit and not-for-profit. Well, I have not-for-profit activities all the time too, and I don't expect to be provided and maintained a building. All right, so what are Cobalters benefiting from? I need to know from all of these groups to the best I know that we don't know who is attending the theater, but how many Cobalters are going to the museum? What, how is it reflecting and relating to Cobalts? When we closed down very controversially the arena, there was an assessment. How many people were using it? How many were Cobalters? And we had to realize that thousands of Cobalt dollars were being put to subsidize other people. We're not North Bay, it's not 90% of attendees are from Cobalt. It's just something we have to realize. And I, and if we're also subsidizing some groups that get 200 visitors in a year and it's costing us $5,000 plus, like I want to know how much we're paying in maintenance to maintain these places. How much are we actually paying for each visitor to be able to attend? And is it really related to us? Because our taxpayers are paying for this benefit. Like I said, hey, I'm happy for them to pay for me to go to the theater, but it's not just me. It's all of Cobalters. I really think that if you, potentially, you could put together an advisory committee to look at this and what other towns are doing. I know in the hospitality field, hotels have nightly room taxes. If you don't want to put a rental fee, then a dollar per entry to various museums and such, a dollar per ticket that is then held in trust reserve for maintenance of these buildings. Otherwise, it's, I just think it's very unfair that especially the theater does not exist without the building. Yet we're being told, like, it came together with multiple funds. I'm glad that it's being covered under insurance. So it's only 10,000 and not 50,000 that taxpayers are responsible for, though our premiums are still going to go up. It's, I just don't think it's fair for the onus to be put on the town solely for that. I just think it has to be more collaborative.
It doesn't bring much money in from the town.
I think those were my notes. And, and there are costs, our. And, and there are costs, our infrastructure money that we're, that we put in, we get infrastructure money, we have to allocate it, so we're not paving this road because we're fixing these buildings. Like it's, there's money being put in for it. So I think we just have to realize that there are costs, even if it's indirect, because there's money invested of Cobalters in these projects that are, I'm not saying they're not good, but we just have to look at how it's being shared.
Okay, and those are all very good points. And I'd like to further add that whether there's somebody in that building or not, it's still a Cobalt-owned building. So we would still have to maintain that building, whether it's empty or vacant. You could sell it. And if we continue to sell our assets, what do we have left?
Our maintenance bill?
Yes. Anyway, these are all discussions we can, we can all have. And like I've always said, everybody's got their opinions, so I don't know if we're deciding anything tonight, or I would like to see us give staff the direction to pull the information together so that we have all the information, so that we can look at what the dollars are, so that we see the full picture. Councillor Hughes.
Yeah, I certainly can't make a decision on this tonight. No chance, it's too many numbers and things.
Councillor Wilcox.
First of all, I would remind everybody of Rick's comment at the beginning that the theater was closed and remained closed and it was about to be meeting the wrecking ball. And if we close the theater, that's one of the potential ends for that theater. And I think it's great that we've had a dedicated group in there maintaining it for easing the cost on all of us. And I go back to when it was first begun, I know I pitched it to Northern Development way back when, 1991, 1990. And they didn't want to pick it up at that time, and then a subsequent council did get on board with a lot of help from Larry Aquino and others. So it's, it's been a really good thing, and the intention was always to perform a public service as opposed to a moneymaker or anything like that. It was a community builder, it was to bring the tri-towns together, it was to attract visitors to the town. It was to provide lots of things for the townspeople, and it's achieved that. By and large, it's done very well, very successfully. I, I think Pat and councillor Starcheck both noted that it, it perhaps isn't necessary that it make a profit. If it can break even, it still fulfills that role as a service to the community. And I think it's an important one, culture and arts are necessary. They give a balanced community, a balanced effort forward, and gives our young people something to aspire to, something to look to. So I think it's very important for our community. That said, I agree with you, your worship, that we have to take our time and take a long look. And I think as councillor Hunter pointed out, try and find ways to generate more revenue out of the building. Certainly, some kinds of basic contributions to all kinds of events that happen there would be appropriate. Sometimes it'll have to be just on a donation basis, not necessarily a fixed amount, depending on the nature of the group using it. But we can look at all of those things and try and put them in as a statement towards the end use of the building. But certainly, I'd say let's not rush into it, let's do a really good job, create the forms, create the way of looking at it, and then make our decisions.
Because this isn't the only municipal owned building that we're going to have to do this with. We've got a few municipal owned buildings, and it's timely, take a look at them with an unbiased eye and apply the same yardstick to all of them. And taking into account what it does give back to the town and the benefits to the community as well. So, because things aren't always a monetary thing, although as councillors, we're always concerned about the monetary, the best goal, because it is extremely tight these days, as I keep saying. So we're all well aware of that. So I think that developing the policy, letting staff or giving them the opportunity and the time to develop the policies to gather the facts is probably the smartest way for us to begin this. But I know that in my conversations, Steve and I had a conversation with Rick. They're concerned about, they set their shows based on their budget a year in advance to 18 months in advance. And that's why I said maybe for the next year, because the roof still needs to be fixed. And that was one of the holdups with signing the lease. I know the canopy overhang is slated to be repaired as well, under the existing budget. That we extend it for the dollar for the year and allow everybody time to put their information in, everybody to look at it and come to a proper decision and not a rushed decision. Does that work for?
I think it's, it's fair that you're going to go through this whole process. I hear the angst in councillor Hunter's voice. And I understand your position as, as a councillor, that's sort of looking at those dollars and stuff. However, there's a couple of things I think that are important. Before the classic open, the tri-towns have an entertainment series. If the classic closes, the tri-towns will still have an entertainment series, but you'll go back to the most. I don't think that's what we want. That's what I want, I live in the US, I want to hear. You made a point about dollars for Cobalt taxpayers, and I understand that. But North Bay doesn't get all of their patrons from North Bay either. And North Bay's on the same arrangement, we're trying to work, and the city of North Bay does. The Blue Jays don't draw every person from Toronto. But the city of Toronto pays the taxes, the taxpayers pay all my infrastructure costs. But they bring all this other stuff in, it puts money into town. And we've done that in the past, when you had a motel here, we used them. When you had restaurants here that were open at night, we used them for dinners and better artists. We don't have one of those now either. Good for lunches, we can do that at the start at the cafe, we can't do dinners. So what do we do next? Well, we send them to Hillary, we use the local places, we don't use the chain hotels. We use the leisure inn. We don't use the fast food chain restaurant, no, send them to Whiskey Jack, those are local people. It's a little broader view than just Cobalt, it's a South American view, that's the best I can do with what we've got. So we do bring money into town. We bring people into town, people come from somewhere, they have to stay somewhere when they come to our shows. Unfortunately, we don't have a motel here right now. If we did, we will be, I don't know, I don't know if we're going to get a motel. You guys, who you convince to build a building. But the, the point being is that, that we bring people to Cobalt. When the arena was closed, we're the only one left that brings people to Cobalt. Some people come to the mining museum, the end of the summer, we try to bring them along with you. So, you know, I think there is something big that we, as, as big as we can, can do to bring people to this town. And I don't care if somebody comes from the US, I don't care. It can come from Cobalt too, that's fine. I just like to see the place full, I like to see it going. And I don't know who ran the entertainment series, that was before my time, I remember going to the mining schools and these shows. And this is a way better, this is a way better profession than for kids as well. They get to do you on a professional stage, a professional language, professional sound. You know, the Paula Davy Dance School uses this to do a professional review of their, of their students. It's not the same one in high school. This is just stuff. So whatever we can do to make this thing work, and whatever we can do to make this Cobalt.
Thank you, Rick.
Should we set up a, a committee to review this, like councillor Hunter said? And, and do status quo for a year? With all of them, while we review the whole works, it gives us much more time to, to, to visit the problem.
Yes, with the caveat that we give staff time to develop some of the forms.
We have a year.
Yeah, before we form the committee? Just so that we're starting off with the tools that the committee is going to need to continue to gather all the information.
So just, just for your permission, we have a year, I can go ahead and book a season. But we need to have the answer for the following season six months from now.
We'll do our best.
The best you can do to kind of put it together so that, so that I can take advantage of those connections that I got. And say, I've got a whole pile here, if I know I've got a year, I will bring another series to town. And I can, with your blessing, I will give that message to the board tonight, that we are, we'll have a plan.
Is that the feeling of council?
Given the restraints that the theater has as far as booking in advance goes, why can't we do the lease for two years at the $1? That way they can be quite comfortable to go ahead and keep it operational. And, and they would have an opportunity at the end of the first year to adjust their third year to reflect whatever we decide with.
I think that would be a good idea if we weren't putting money so much from the town, you know what I mean, on making it something else.
Yeah, and I don't see, the reason I'm suggesting a year is, let's give it, and then in January, we can see where staff is going by the middle of January, end of January, that's one month in, one month and a half. I'm sure that within six months, we could have an answer for all of these entities, because it's not only the classic theater that these questions are coming from, it's all the entities that are in municipal owned properties that I'm getting questions from. So I don't think this is a decision we want to drag on, nor do I want to rush into it. But I can foresee that within six months, we should come to some sort of resolution. So we can visit it the end of the first quarter of 2024, the end of March. And if we don't think we can meet that six month deadline, then we can bring it up to discuss again at that point. Councillor Hughes.
Would it be easier for us to come up with a total right now and say $200 a month, $300 a month for the next two years?
Something that's going to apply standard across the board. Because we've done this piecemeal in the history, and it doesn't bode well for future councils, because then this discussion happens all over again when the leases come up again. I seen it when I was on council as a councillor, and here we are again. So let's, let's come up with a standard that can be carried into the future. Councillor Hunter.
I love that as an ideal, and we can work with it as something to work toward. But I think different groups have different funding sources, have different, so I'm not sure that a standard is going to be possible.
A standard with room at the bottom as to different information that each entity feels is valuable as part of their value of the service that they provide, I think. But there are basics that are standard across all of them that we definitely should be aware of as councillors that are making fiscal decisions that are going to affect these places as well. So I understand what you're saying, they're not all the same. But operating is operating, and then the other stuff is, I don't want to call it the fluff, the chaff that comes at the end, that rounds out the information we need to make a, a proper decision. So it won't be standard across the board for everybody, but it'll be standardized to a point and then allow us to take other information into account. Is that where you were kind of going with that?
Yeah, well, just that we have to, we'll see what happens as we explore it.
Yeah. Okay, so are we good with that?
Push it out to the next year.
Well, yeah, we're going to give it a year and we'll, we'll see where we're at, at the end of March, the end of the first quarter of 2024, whether we can meet a six month deadline for a decision on all of these.
So motion to extend the lease by one year for a dollar while we figure out more? Like basically the same lease as last time?
Or do we want to just give direction?
Just direction at this time for staff.
I can just give direction.
That's enough, we don't need to motion.
No, because we're not actually signing any leases at this point.
But we're making a commitment that he's going to book people.
Yeah, but that's what we've been going with since the last lease expired already.
So, so what, what we would need, or what I would need would be to know that we have the status quo through the 24, 25 season, which would be June to June. I could be more than willing to be back here in five months or six months and see what we can do to fit in with what your processes are. And then if we can then come up with the following four years or five year packages and says, okay, this we can do, can stabilize your funding, basically your insurance, outside costs. And we can, we can deal with all of those inside costs.
We can introduce a motion at the next regular meeting to allow the lease to continue for a dollar for the next year. And then that way you've got a commitment, a firm commitment from the town.
We hadn't signed the lease yet because the repairs haven't been executed, so where are we up with that? We don't actually have an executed lease yet, we're more than happy to go on as you're moving forward with the repairs. We can move forward with the lease.
But I don't want to sign us into a five year lease at a dollar a year until council makes a decision. So that's why I'm saying we can just hold a status quo for the fall, next year.
The status quo is we didn't have a lease.
And, and that's what, basically what we're going with for another year. Okay, and with interest, we will hopefully have some resolution and some leases. But we will introduce a motion at our regular meeting, our next meeting, and that way it's a firm commitment from the town.
Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to, to, you know, and other questions down the road.
I was just curious, because what councillor Wilcox is suggesting of two years, I wanted your opinion on that.
That would be easier. What I'm looking at is 18 months, because our season will run from September for the following April. So we're going to run it into 2025.
Yeah, so what's ideal for you timeframe?
Ideal would be
18 months.
From here, the minimum would be 18 months. If we had two years on that, that would be a little easier. Five years is a lot easier, not there yet, hopefully we get there shortly. Two years would make for easier planning and, and going forward and not finding that we might get a surprise in January at the middle of the season.
That's good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done all those years. Yeah, and to start developing the policy, the forms. Okay, number five, staff reports, 5.1 Public Works, November 2023 report. 5.2 Animal Control, October 2023 report. 5.3 Bi Law Enforcement, November 2023 report. Be it resolved that council accept the staff reports as presented, a mover and a secondary. Councillor Hughes, councillor Anderson, and discussion on the reports. How many?
I believe that between seven and eight, it's a high amount again, this year as it was last year.
Do you know if it's the same trouble to Miss Me Shores is having? They have a few roads that are open, like every month, it seems like. If it is here and then it's there and then it's there.
No, that's called Lang Street. Aging infrastructure.
Lakes are 25 years old or so.
No, but they backfilled it with some very suspect sized rocks that as water travels through, there is a vibration and those pipes actually do damage the pipe, or those rocks do damage.
Here, very news.
Our Public Works Department, after they dug up, they realized how large some of the boulders. Because this was done in the early nineties, late eighties. A lot of this infrastructure, and when they put in the large rocks, over time with the shifting and it was coming down, it's hitting the service lines. One more that we're finding out at this time.
Yeah, I've seen some of what come out of the hole when they dug the water leak up behind me. And yeah, there's some good sized rocks in there.
It can be one of the lines themselves or is it also balanced and things to the very end?
Some valves, but a lot of it is actually the lines or all the service lines itself. It seems because it's a smaller and then it's easier to get through, especially with the large boulders there with the movement and as everyone's seen with them opening up the roadway, you see exactly what they're dealing with, what they're pulling up.
I was told it was all kind of little dimples and I was like. I didn't get to actually see it because not all out near the hole.
Was that us that did it or was that the highways going through town? When they were redoing everything?
No, it was 25 years ago.
At that time.
It was contractors that were working on it at that time.
For the highways or for us?
No, for us and within the municipality because I recall up on where Gunning Drive was, I remember seeing the contractors there all the time when we were picking up there as well.
Discussion on the other staff reports? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, items for council consideration, draft motion, be it resolved that council review the items for council consideration as presented. A mover and a secondary. Counselor Hughes, Counselor Cooper. Okay, discussion. So we'll go through them one at a time. Six point one, Draft Bylaw 2023. Amendment number two to Bylaw 2009-003, Property Standards to Implement an Escalating Fines Scale for Violations. Staff Report 2023, 120501. Any discussion on that? Counselor Wilcox.
I'm just wondering how many local municipalities are following an escalating process like that? I'm just thinking that if part of the reason that someone isn't doing something to remediate a problem in the property, perhaps because they can't afford it, then charging them more and more and more just puts them more behind the eight ball than getting the job done.
Actually, if you look at the two bylaws, six point one, six point two, kind of go together with that, the fines. Staff did an in-depth look at other municipalities, and this is following suit with the other municipalities. It's the reoccurring events that seem to have occurred here. So that's requiring more staff attention, getting our bylaws are involved as well or repeats. So this is going, this is an issue not only with us, but other municipalities. And this charge system is just to recoup cost. This is not a way to try and receive any extra money, none of that. This is just to recoup current costs right now.
So it's not a matter of it's escalating because somebody can't afford to pay. It's not a matter of it's escalating because somebody's done the same thing again after it's already been addressed before.
Forgive me for being obstinate, but if it cost a hundred dollars the first time, why does it cost a hundred and fifty dollars the second time?
To stop it from occurring over and over again because after the second time, do you really think they're going to want to hit it a third time? There's got to be consequences to action and inaction.
Well, that's what's wrong in society today. There isn't.
There are no consequences, so we're implementing some consequences.
And just to that, I, I would suspect that the first time, fifty dollars is insufficient to actually cover the cost for the amount of times that the bylaw officer actually goes and talks to them before the first official warning is actually issued. So the hundred fifty is maybe closer to starting to recover our costs than the fifty.
It's true.
Yep, very valid point. Because the first time it occurs, the bylaw does do a lot of education and talks to people before he does enforcement. So yeah, I'd say that's a very fair assessment. Counselor Anderson?
As well, when it comes to the second and the third time, why should the rest of the taxpayers have to pay the costs that the town are, is incurring for it all? It should go back to property owner.
Yeah, I agree 100%. These fines are probably even too low. You gotta put the foot down somewhere.
Not making a profit here.
Can't spank the person, but you can spank their wallet, I guess.
One way to put it. I don't know how politically correct that was, but.
I didn't say where you spank them.
Okay, so that was six point one and six point two. Six point four, municipal office and public works. Oh, sorry, six point one and six point two. Direction? Yeah, I'll bring it to the regular meeting. Six point three, we've already addressed the leases of the classic theater. Six point four, municipal office and public works holiday out, public works holiday hours. And there was a staff report included. This is something we do every year.
Worship, this same thing as what we did last year. This is for all staff. It'd be just using two and a half days of their vacation time. Or lose two and a half days off. This is the policy that our procedure we went with last year worked well.
And Counselor Hunter?
I just want to say thank you for adding on to your report that if it snows and Public Works does have to work, that, that they won't be using their vacation time. Because I remember last year we approved it no, with a weather forecast for snow, and they didn't actually get their vacation and they worked the whole time. And I thought, if we knew it was going to snow, why are we giving them vacation and paying them double time? When they're not getting the vacation and they're not getting the rest they be and they're working. So it just seems fair that we give them a vacation if possible. And if the snow is out of our control, then they're just working regular like they would have. So thank you for including that because that was a question I would have had.
This was the exact same what we did last year, and the individuals will not lose their vacation time if they are brought in. So it worked well.
Anything else?
I'd like to bring this in.
Okay, six point five, council remuneration, staff report, 2023, 120504. So we deferred this to this meeting because there was some.
Strap and see.
Discussion, I think that people and, and I think we all needed to think about it a little more carefully. So once again, who wants to start the discussion? No?
Actually.
Yeah.
I'm going to stick with my original zero percent.
And anybody else? Anybody else? Counselor Anderson?
And I've had a good two week think about it. And I think we should go to number two. We do work very hard.
Especially this year.
Yeah, yeah. As you pointed out last year, last time, you know, we, we have been working hard. Staff hasn't taken a cut. Nothing else has taken a cut around the pay. So I think it's only fair that we stay, we're trying to mirror the staff. And we're talking about our increases, increasing at the same percentage as the staff instead of going cost of living or whatever. So I think we should go back to where we were and look at number two there. Changed my mind from how I voted last time.
Can you clarify what you mean by number two? Okay, that, because there's other number two options.
Yeah, the, the second suggested there was our 24 would be at the same rate as the, take the 22.
Twenty twenty-two rate times two percent.
Yeah, plus the, plus the percentage. And that would give us, bring it up 23 and then the same thing for 24. I think that. Is that how I'm reading it?
I'm not sure if the number is right at the end of the page. Yeah, but we did go back 50 bucks this year. So if we're going with 2022, we got to go up 50 and then two percent. So that needs to be reflected in that, and so it'd be another like 55, 60 dollars maybe, whatever, whatever that works out to.
Well, I think the number two recommendation was the 2022 rate. So not the 2023 rate, but the 2022 rate.
2022 rate was 50 bucks more. We lost them this year. We went down 50 in 2023.
Okay, but what the recommendation was is the 2022 rate times two percent. Which is a hundred and thirty dollar increase for counselors. Was the recommendation that's listed on here. Counselor Cooper?
We didn't actually go backwards with that. We were locked at the 6,500 dollars. And then we had the increase. All we did is back the increase out, so we ended up at 6,500 dollars at the end of the year again. Yeah, so it was a zero percent increase for the, so we had got a, I think it was four or five checks.
Why is this one, why is this total 6361?
That was this other report from 2018.
Oh, that's a 218 review, okay. What's the math on that then? Was that 60, 630? Okay, I see right now.
I think. Everybody's counted on their fingers and toes and they're good. Counselor Wilcox.
I'm going to almost agree with Counselor Cooper. Freeze it at the current rate for the remainder of this year and to be reviewed at the conclusion of our budget next year.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to China. Everybody else has had an increase this year, last year, the year before, the year before. The work doesn't get any easier. The work only gets harder. So I do believe that I am with Counselor Hughes and Counselor Anderson with option to the two percent increase. I think it's only fair. We want people to continue to run for these positions. You have to give them some, something to run for. It's not a lot of money that we get paid. It's basically, it is a volunteer position. It takes us out of our regular day-to-day lives, our other commitments. And sometimes it clashes with our personal commitments, but we still make our town commitment and we put it ahead of that. So I think it's only fair that we are recognized the same way everybody else is. I'm sure there's no resident in this town that would turn down an increase in their pension or their pay. So why should we be expected to?
I think the two percent is very, very generous, very low anyways.
It is a little.
When it states here about number two, as an example, two of maximum percentage. So if the CPI for 2024 was 1.5, then that's what it would be. But if it went to 5.5, your max would be just two. And that's what this was just trying to say into there. So it has kind of a threshold of exactly how high it will go. But it, it's always possible with the minimum as well, depending on the CPI for that fiscal year. What is it? What is it? What 2022 was with a 2.2% CPI. And there, but when you look at 2023, you look at a 6.8% CPI, which is a large amount. So this also would set, trying to set a standard for future councils and for every year because it's something not to revisit every single year. And that discussion. Should be able to have in place for at least a four-year term and have a policy put in place.
Because once again, it's not fair to throw it on to every new council that gets voted in to have to vote on this and make them the bad guy with everybody. Let's again, come up with a policy and follow that policy. It's not like we're the highest paid council in Northern Nigeria by any means.
Northern Nigeria doing it well.
Of course, we're ourselves the lowest paid municipality.
That's right.
So what would direction to staff be? Do we have a consensus or do we need to put this on the next regular meeting for a vote? Okay, motion on the next regular meeting?
Okay, and for direction would be Counselor Cooper, he mentioned. At zero. And also would the other one be as what staff mentioned with the free policy? But this would be for 2025, but for 2024 would be a calculation.
Yeah.
Depending on what council would like to do for 2024 for that percentage increase.
Recorded vote as well, please. We could do a percentage vote right now.
You can call the recorded vote.
He knows in advance and he doesn't have to.
They're always prepared for a recorded vote.
So would you like us to discuss right now what that maximum percent is? Because you put two percent as a placeholder, but really it's just an example. So it could be three or four or five, like it's up to us to decide. Especially considering it was six percent very recently. Is two percent?
I would say go with the CPI to a maximum increase of two percent.
But just two percent was put there as an idea. Maybe it should be three.
Well, I think that was even proposed with the last town manager as well. Was it not?
Because if it's going to be less than the percent amount, it will be less. That's just the maximum. But if CPI ends up, I mean, hopefully inflation is going to.
Never does.
You might after this, little round robin.
It'll still go backwards. Okay, well, what percentage do we want to make up?
I'd like to say three.
I think in. I think three is a little high myself.
Two point five.
This is almost like, it actually greases now. I remember.
Again, it's a maximum.
Percentage increase than what our staff is. When you do a percentage based.
While considering what council's getting paid as opposed to what staff's getting paid, you're comparing apples and oranges.
Well, it's still a percentage, right?
Well, yes, but we're nowhere near what staff is making.
And this.
They're here every day.
They're going to go up.
Eight hours a day.
Staff might go up two percent, so we go up two percent.
But they, they use the CPI when they.
They'll go up 60 bucks. We're not going to go up 60 bucks.
They use their CPI in their negotiations anyways, and it's, wasn't it recently like eight, 10%? I can't remember the exact amount, but they certainly not two. So they're going up with inflation. This is a maximum. It's not a guarantee.
They're not even posting inflation in their last negotiation. Because they went through COVID and they got a 1.25% increase and we got a 6.81% increase. But we followed, we followed the CPI. They didn't.
They choose to negotiate.
They may negotiate it.
Switch to a percentage of minimum two percent.
Hey, but there's other things that can be the factors. You can't compare them, I don't feel, because you're talking also benefits. We don't get benefits. We're only talking a straight remuneration per. We don't get benefits. We're only talking a straight remuneration per council. There are no benefits to this position. Other than the occasional. Anyway. Okay, so staff has some recommendations at the bottom here. And I'm seeing the recommendation that staff, that council party staff create an elected officials remuneration policy for council's consideration. Outlining terms and procedures to ensure that there's consistency and equity policy to be implemented for twenty-twenty-five. Do we agree with that? Read it.
When I read this page, I see that we used to be responsible, we had sixty-nine hundred forty-five dollars. Okay, what, break that down. What does that actually mean?
We're gonna develop a policy and procedure that's in place so that all councils in the future can follow it as well. So that this discussion doesn't have to, like Lisa's, keep coming up every council term.
At least, yeah, maybe we won't have to revisit for ten years.
Until Councillor Cooper says, we need to revisit that policy and change it.
Okay, so that was a recommendation of staff and I actually feel that that is probably a good recommendation.
It'll speed us up in the future. We won't have to have a three or four meetings made about it.
Okay, now. What do we wanna do this for twenty-twenty-four? We're back to this again. A vote on it the next meeting. What percentage are we gonna vote on? Percentage are we gonna put in the motion?
Might I suggest you just start at zero and go up until the government majority saying that that's the number I want and then go with that?
Today?
Yeah.
Okay, so zero.
Why don't we start at fifty and work our way?
I will start here. Actually, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start at the higher end. I'm gonna go three. Because I heard somebody say three, so let's go three. Show of hands, wants three.
As a maximum.
Okay. Two point five.
Oh, I'd like a three as a minimum or CPI, whichever is more.
Okay, well, you're way, way out of the realm of.
Yeah, because CPI, because next few years it's gonna be up. And if we're just gonna get.
We're gonna have to put you on the budget committee so that you can see what that creates. Show of hands for three. Okay, show of hands for two point five.
I don't, but I don't know, you're going down, but you said the majority, so do we now count for the two point five?
Count for the three unless you think that you shouldn't be at three.
If you didn't get the majority, I just don't understand, but okay.
No, I'm.
I just figured it was a no, so now we're going to the two point five.
Okay, well, now that's good. If only three, you voted for three, so now we're voted two point five. It's gonna vote, you can vote again. It's majority.
We'll take path to average, we'll average around to our three side.
I, I'm going with two. I'm sorry. That's where I was going to.
But we are at two point five as an option.
And there at zero.
And I recommend what Councillor Wilcox has said is have a couple motions in place at our next meeting, one at zero.
And we'll vote on.
One at two, another at two point five and another at three.
Zero is not gonna fly, so.
Up to a maximum of three.
Well, I'll even do a minimum of two point five.
Few different motions and then it will be a recorded vote as.
Well, two points statements for zero, for two, for two point five and for three and for something more than three.
Okay, so can we move on?
And then also would be council direct staff to create an elected officials.
I believe that's good direction for staff. Complete a policy and procedure.
The reason why for the twenty-twenty-four is payroll. And that begins, of course, in less than a month.
I think we just wasted the raise in this discussion. We've spent enough time on it.
So let's move along then, please. Six, six point six Geo Exchange Pilot Project. Staff report twenty-twenty-three. Twelve oh five oh five. And you had a report on the Geo Exchange program. Councillor Hunter.
Um, well, well, I understand where the staff are coming from and their recommendation for deferring the project. I'm wondering if instead we could have an advisory committee of people that research and approach. So it wouldn't take up staff time, but rather perhaps some councillors who are interested that could approach and start trying to form relationships and and look at a larger potential project. I'm presenting.
Anybody else? Councillor Hughes.
I say no none of this time.
I'm good with this report here.
Councillor Anderson. Much as I'm sure you know, I'd like to jump in both feet and everything else, but I think we. We've got to, we can't jump in now. But we do have to keep the options open for the future. I, I'm most interested to see where the, uh, the, the Community College project is going to go with this.
Well, the greenhouses?
The greenhouses. Um, so, you know, I'd like to see, see where they're going. Because there may be advisory we help, we can give them, that I can give them on my knowledge of where things are out there. But without us becoming a part of it. But as far as going ahead with the geothermal. I can't see us being able to do it now. And I know maybe we won't be the first in Northern Ontario because there are other mines. But I, I looked and looked and looked over those maps the last two or three weeks. And I came up with the best place actually for getting to the buildings and everything else to drill. Gee, would be in the side of that hill back out there. And that's not a good drilling spot, so. But I would like to, I would like to be able to follow the community college project.
No, I was just saying, like what Graham was saying, like I'm gonna ask about, how would you bring the temperature underneath the, like down below forty-three Fahrenheit? Right? Bring it up in the winter to keep these buildings. And he said the energy source would be electrical. Now, I know I have an electric baseboard in my garage. I left on the lowest setting all winter long. My bill was a hundred dollars more a month because of that one electrical. So I'm wondering how this is gonna be. And he even said, it's not gonna, you may not even save any money. But you'll be the first to have it or something. Like, I don't know if I can go on that. I, and I like. But your, your idea with the university, with the university, the college doing that, their research, yeah, I, that's, that's good. Just as long as they don't mess things up. If they're gonna drill, you said they're, they're gonna drill or they're not drilling?
So that, that's what I'd like clarification for, because at first, when we first started a year ago, there was a group ready to drill outside the theater. So is that over? That's not happening? Is that?
Now it's up to us to make it happen. They were gonna make it happen. This was gonna take no resources from the town. It was, when they approached the town, this was all that. Now what we heard at the last meeting is now if you wanna do it, you have to reach out. You have to get the ball rolling. He's out of it now.
He's retiring, that guy.
Yeah.
That doesn't guarantee though.
The recommendation was, the recommendation is. I, my feeling is I don't see that there's gonna be that big of an energy savings when you have, have to use electricity. To recognize that and the buildings that are gonna benefit from it are few. And for their test project, they had to have nobody living in those buildings, while there's somebody living above the post office. So that building's out. So I, I don't see it as being something that's viable at this time. Not till they further advance this technology a bit more.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of the buildings and effects anyways, we don't pay the heat and hydro on anyways, do we? So it wouldn't have any benefit to the town. Cause the classic theater pays hydro and heat. And the miners museum does that, everybody else does that. So it wouldn't affect us at all. It'd only help them out in the end game.
And I don't think it'd be anything we'd wanna rely on if we're using helping. Or we do have tenants. Councillor Cooper.
I think we should just take into consideration what staff recommended and run with it.
I'm good with the staff recommendation that. Okay, so six point seven twenty twenty-four budget working groups, staff report. Yes. Yes, with me.
As we're coming into twenty twenty-four, I'd like to get a jump on the budget immediately. So I would like to get a working group, advisory group together and start hammering out the twenty twenty-four budget. We, it was a bit longer last year at the committee together. But since we know what we're based upon for the upcoming year, we just to start as soon as possible.
Councillor Cooper.
I'll volunteer for that group again this year.
I hear you were a very good participant in that group this year, so I think that that would be pretty good. Unless staff, does it, does staff want him there again?
Councillor Anderson's quite willing to serve again.
Okay, so we have our two councillors. Is all the council okay with that? Or does somebody else wanna jump in and step up? Okay. No, you guys did a good job. And you, you know how staff works now, so.
Be a little bolder by the end of it.
It could be a little grim.
Feet wet last time, I'll be experts this time, right?
Instead, you're gonna be a little bolder.
So direction is to bring it to the regular meeting and have Councillor Cooper and Councillor Anderson. As part of the advisory committee.
Okay, on twenty twenty-three capital projects status report. Any questions, discussions?
As everyone knows, with our funders and how we are based on budget and where we are right now, going overall, most of these items. Quickly, um, one definitely stability, stabilize the head frame or waiting one more quote. Classic theater that was actually mentioned earlier with the canopy, uh, fire museum. The engineer is just waiting for a couple more, has been talking to a couple contractors, just waiting for some formal quotes. On that. And really for space downstairs. Council to decide really what to use that space for. Really after that, we go into the wetlands and then with the Nord's, also with the traffic growth. The one item there is really Third Street is for twenty twenty-four. Tech Park completed, uh, they're gonna finalize landscape in twenty twenty-four with the walking path project through Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. Colongarium is for twenty twenty-four. The municipal service delivery review that was pending, so that will be brought into twenty twenty-four. The new garage, they have heat. The heating system is now. Running there and they're currently bringing over from the old garage into the new garage. Also with the municipal fleet. It was like the fire truck. Uh, right now, discussions are with fire chief. Uh, he just got the most latest quote late last week. And it's now from the executive committee to bring what they would like brought over to council. So I've asked, what, what are their recommendations? What their needs are? So they're gonna go over that with the committee.
Okay.
And that, uh, one other thing was with the gas tax. Going there, what we did was, uh, we went to the funder for an increase, like last year for some of the water department was a twenty-five thousand. We went back. It's now up to fifty-five thousand to offset some of the upgrades of our service lines in town. Yes, that is good news, but it does bring down off, uh, what bring it to twenty twenty-four, recent changes. But again, that will be brought forward to the new, uh, budget committee and we'll be working with that. So we were able to offset.
Another question about the capital things? Yeah, um, the paving on Commission Street. I believe there was a hundred and ten thousand earmarked for that job. Is that? That paving we did wasn't a hundred and ten right there by the train station, was it? Were we planning on doing the whole street?
We'll be revisiting that come the new year. Or some other, like, we were doing some other paving still in the, and, uh, Lang Street area, which cost us more money. So, and of course, that was priority two. So.
You mean like Watson Place and Lang there?
Yeah, I've heard of those places, so, okay. I was just asking about Commission Street. Um, remember they, they were putting the housing in down there at the train station? Were we gonna be still having access if that goes through? That's still a discussion with the, you're talking about the O N R. Yeah, that is still.
Because it's slightly off the O N R stuff, if we could understand why they want specifically what the concern is, why they want that road closed. And if they think that people are gonna slide down, maybe we just put some cement barriers so they don't go on. Anyhow, it's not the topic.
Send though, send your concerns to the town office. Um, that is an ongoing discussion on the O N R. Councillor Wilcox.
Going back to the fire truck, did the executive give an indication when they would be?
I believe they were maybe having a meeting tonight. I do know how part department was having one, so I'm hoping they were discussing that. Or be very soon. Cause I have been oppressing them as well on this.
Anything else? Councillor Anderson.
On the fire truck, just as matter of statistics, I saw a news report on the TV this week. It's the Canadian Fire Chief's Office. Uh, it's all, all of the fire departments across Canada were surveyed. And of all those that sent in their survey, fully fifty percent of the fire departments are like ours. Operating with outdated equipment, outdated training and outdated everything. And now they're starting to push and saying for smaller departments. These vehicles are quite serviceable, so there, there is now, um, a push being made to the federal government. To say what's serviceable and my, our, our discussion with John Bantoff when he was at our meeting was actually picked up by a Hamilton, the Hamilton Sentinel as well. So, and it is gonna be on the TMA agenda in January as well. So this is something I've been definitely pushing and every time I meet a minister, I ask. Is there anything you can do? So. I think it's important that small municipalities aren't held to the same measuring yardstick as large city centers because we put less mileage, less wear and tear on our equipment. So I don't think we should be held to the same standards as somebody who's, their equipment's going out like six, seven, eight, nine, ten times a day. Ours is lucky to go out four times a year. So, there's a big difference. Anything else? Okay. Financial report, January first to November thirtieth, twenty twenty three staff report, twenty twenty three, twelve oh five oh eight. Any questions, concerns? I think it was a very good report. It was a good overview.
It also shows what staff provided was to show how much of our operating expenses were remaining at thirteen percent. But we are still waiting for some invoices still for the projects that were done this year. And then, of course, this is gonna go right back to the twenty twenty four budget committee and work on that. Do you think it's looking good though so far with that? Or you think we'll have something?
It's gonna be tight.
Yeah.
I would think if you have only thirteen percent you still have there last month and you're still waiting for outstanding invoices, yeah, you're.
At this point, you're in reserve or, or very close to it.
Very, yeah. So that's why I wanna start with the twenty twenty four budget committee as soon as possible.
Okay. Six point, are we okay to move on? Six point ten, Penny Saint Germain, request for a council representative to a new OPP attachment board. Yep.
Back in July, we received an email about time. It actually came from the Minister of the Secretary General about how the composition, the board compositions have been going for testing OPP. So there'd be actually three boards. Board one, City of Mississauga Shorts would have two seats on it. Board two would have seven and that would include Armstrong, Brethor, Chamberlain Township, Charleton, Town of Inglehart, Banjo, Blair James Township and Thonammo Village. We are in category three, which is nine seats. So work has begun now to put these boards together. And what they're looking for is a command from this council to have.
Is it nine, nine or fifteen?
Nine on the board number, considered board number three. And that's Casey Township, Town of Cobalt, Coleman Township, Hurley Township, Harris, Hudson, Kearns, Town of Latchford and Municipality of Magli.
It's nine council seats on the board?
The fifteen, that's.
Three community representatives. Three provincial. Seat appointment seats.
Does that stand for, what's a provincial appointment seats?
Appointed by.
Within the board itself. So currently right now, Coleman Township just last night appointed their counselor to be on the board. And they would like to have a counselor appointed before the end of like to bring it to the regular meeting.
And I'd like to step up for that one. Putting that out there for the next meeting, so you all know I'd like to really, I was the OPP liaison my last council term.
So it's just basically one from each of our divisions here?
Yeah, you can call me the neighborhood watch in the summer when I sit on my random.
I always had interest in you, but don't.
I'd like to be, I'd like to be able to rattle some cages and get some answers on it.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, with stuff moving.
Direction is to appoint at the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Mayor had said.
If council is okay with that, or if they'd rather appoint someone else.
I got enough on my plate.
I'm kidding. Okay, six point eleven, Township of the Ranch for a letter of support gender-based and intimate partner violence. Questions?
Are they looking for supporters?
Yeah. Yes.
They really look up to us.
Can I talk on this? A number of communities. This one here is from Banjo. Actually, I've seen a number of them come through. The province, including North Bay, St. Marie, putting this through as well. So what they're looking for is just a letter, support us indoors. And we've done that. So this would be on the regular meeting to, to bring forward a letter of support.
Council's direction, I go ahead with that? Okay. And yeah, all, I was just gonna say all in favor. All in favor? Do you all remember the motion? Let me read it again.
No, no. Nope, we didn't vote.
Oh, all in favor? Items for council consideration? Carrie, you've got some more to go. No, this is items for council information.
Six point eleven.
That was items for council consideration, section six. Now we're items for council information. Section seven. Seven point one, Tmiskwing Health Unit, Community Placemaking Grant Approval Letter. Should we frame that? We honor a grant for our sun sale, our shade sale.
Where do we get the tree?
And our, and a couple of trees.
Two trees.
Two trees?
You get two trees.
So Counselor Cooper has reached out to me and he was gonna see about getting some.
The number is Steve.
Okay.
Found the number and, yeah. He can reach out.
Okay, so staff's gonna reach out and send us a post for the sun shade. Shade sale, whatever you call it.
What are we looking for for them? Like a wooden post or a steel post?
Changing a bunch of poles down and hunch it through. Like there's transport loads of poles going down. There's the old ones we could use to, that would save us probably five hundred dollars a pole.
Really donate? Are they telephone poles like?
Yeah, yeah, they're hydro poles.
Get enough for two sales.
Eh, they'll give them to us.
What's it gonna look like? I have no idea.
Like a triangle and then it's got a canopy that hangs that we're in the shade.
Using trees.
Oh, no, and we're getting two trees.
Oh, two maple trees.
Maple trees?
Something with leaves on it.
I think we're doing two trees.
Yes, two kind of trees.
That'd be great. What a mess that'd be.
Maple.
Yeah, big crimps and red crimson.
Yeah. That's a discussion for another day. We got the grant, so then it'll be the discussion on the particulars. Okay.
He's excited.
Okay, I'm glad everybody's excited. Let's move along. Seven point two, D S A, twenty twenty three, corner three.
Not excited.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Not that I probably have very many answers, but looking forward them along and get some answers if you do. Okay. Seven point three, Tmiskwing Municipal Services Association, T M S A, notice of new planner, Jennifer Pie. We'll welcome Jennifer Pie aboard, starting, I believe, in January. Yeah. And that'll be a shared planner. Our building inspector is? Okay. Mayor to provide update on community engagement initiative and food bank. Well, I'll start with the easy one. The sorry. So the food bank gave us an update on the twentieth of November. I haven't heard anything from them since then. We did have our think tank meeting, gave them some other options. Last we heard and I noticed that we sent out to Latchford and Coleman was they were investigating a space. That's the last I have heard from Leanne or Emily.
So the, they've got the space down at the arena and that is having to be thoroughly cleaned and repaired before. What's happening this month? On Wednesday mornings, the recipients, when it's their week to come, are coming to the, to St. James Angling Church. And this, this month, they will be getting gift certificates, but as well, they partnered with Haila Berry Food Bank. All the food that was left went to Haila Berry so that any of our people that need it above and beyond or into January before it opens, because we don't know when and when, will be able to go to Haila Berry Food Bank. We service theirs. Everyone's working in cooperation to keep things smooth as possible.
Good news.
And I guess we missed yesterday, the the Salvation Army was Monday at the library to, for people to fill out the forms for the baskets. So.
Quite a few. They're down low this year, so they have quite a few opportunities.
Yeah.
They're like half sixty and they're usually one twenty.
So we're moving ahead.
Yeah, baskets to go.
Okay. My community engagement initiative. The Golden Age Club has agreed to let me use their space on the seventeenth of December, it's a Sunday from two to four. So if counselors can attend, that would be great because we can show them how engagement starts and maybe get the conversation started. I'm terming it a Christmas Christmas and Big Idea Community Coffee Get Together. There will be coffee, tea, chocolate, some nibbles, candy canes for the kids, and I'm working on getting Santa for the kids. I figure it's a good way to kick off the Christmas season with our residents. And see if we can get some positive. Oh, it's getting close. Positive conversations started. And it, I, I can't stress enough the positive conversation because I will have a negative tax. It's like a swear jar. You come in with a negative, any negative ideas or you wanna promote negativity, that's not gonna be the space for it. Let's keep it positive. Bring any ideas that you have. This goes for the residents. What skills you have to make those ideas come to fruition? What skills you can volunteer to help it come about? And nothing's off the table. Let's get creative. Okay, let's get back to what we used to be. I remember people pulled together in good times and bad times, not just bad times. And let's get the negative garbage off Facebook because negativity is not gonna invite people or entice people to come here to visit, to see what we have here. If anything, it's gonna push them away. And putting it out on Facebook, on social media, for everybody to see in a negative tone, just chases people away.
And chases their own volunteers away.
Yes, everybody wants to know what happened to everything that we used to have. You can't get people to volunteer anymore. As you volunteer, you get crucified. So let's start treating our volunteers properly, thanking them, giving them the respect they deserve for stepping up and giving their time to do it. I think that's really important. As part of the community initiative, in the future, I'm hoping to do something about volunteer appreciation as well. This event is only gonna cost me about forty dollars. We did get a donation of two hundred and fifty towards fund. I don't know if I'm allowed to say who it was from or if it's supposed to remain anonymous. I also did get another thirty dollar cash donation from a resident. So, and I figure probably a total of forty dollars. I'm donating the nibbles, the cookies. Gingerbread, shortbread, chocolate, shortbread and lemon shortbread cookies. So come out. Drag people with you. Not by the hair, by the hand. Okay, I will be talking to the radio station as well to get word out and John Shimko has volunteered to help me do a video to post on our town Facebook page as well. How about you then? So hoping to get the word spread. I'm only gonna do one of these once every three months. It takes a lot of work. I am developing posters and I'm hoping to take around some of the businesses on the weekend, reaching out to the businesses in town to see if they're interested in any way. Doing what I can. If anybody's got any ideas or they wanna pitch in and help. All the help is appreciated and I could use some help setting up some tables and chairs on the seventeen. Okay. I'll knock on Counselor Star Jack's door.
It says, it says I'm off. I was checking my calendar.
I, I can't see me struggling with setting up tables, but I'd give it a go. Okay, so that's it for my updates. Okay, so draft motion, be it resolved that council accept the items for council information as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Hughes, Counselor Cooper. Okay, any discussion on any of those items? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, unfinished business. Nine, new business, nine point one surplus lot, ninety three Cobalt Street, draft motion. Where is that? The regular council meeting on October seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Council declared ninety three Cobalt Street be advertised for sale. And whereas one bid was received by the due date, now therefore be it resolved that council approve the sale of ninety three Cobalt Street to Chantel Bennett for the sum of eighteen thousand five hundred and direct staff to proceed with the necessary documents. And you'll see the email was attached. Okay, need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Star Chuck, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Mayor's report. I think I've already said it all. I think we're all ready to go. Other than it is Christmas season, be kind. If cold weather sets in, set on, check on people that you know that are struggling. See if you can give them a hand, help them out. Give them a ride somewhere, hot bowl of soup. Okay, closed meeting, there is none. Business arising from closed, none. Adjournment, draft motion, be it resolved at the committee of the whole meeting of council, be adjourned. Nineteen, I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Hughes. All is favor. Carrie, have a good night.
Thank you.